Welcome, everyone. And did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any?
Do you want to call roll?
Oh, I do. Yes, thank you, Elaine. We're so disoriented here.
I know we're excited, but...
Quickly, and then we'll do the minutes. Okay, Mary Lou Lawrence.
Here.
Steve Brown.
Here.
Brooke Jewell.
Sarah Peace.
Here.
Elaine Breslow.
Present.
Megan Brinsey.
Here.
Alex Viteri.
Hi, I'll get here, sorry.
And Carolyn Coffey is here. Yeah, okay, I didn't want you to drive off the road, but, okay. And Catherine Harvey is here. Okay, so now has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? All right, any corrections, additions, questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the September meeting?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. And so that is Megan, right?
Yes, Director's Report. Okay. It's okay. So October is one of our favorite months at the library because we can dress it up a little bit and have a little bit of fun. So we have two programs in particular. Haunted Objects and Bigfoot Relics is coming next week, or tomorrow, excuse me. And last week, we had The Paranormal Couple from the Travel Channel. That one's tomorrow.
The Paranormal.
I'm sorry, Legends and Haunts of New England was last week. We had 12 people come. It was... So this is something Megan D. had planned, and Allison took over. So it was directed towards teenagers, but we got all adults, which is fine. So people came and enjoyed it.
What was the age distribution just on the curiosity?
So from what I understand, it was just all like middle adults, I would say. So I think people were just familiar with sometimes... They might have not been Cohasset residents. Sometimes these ghost hunters have followers, and so they're kind of like an automatic audience that will come to each one of their programs regarding, depending on where they are. So that might have been the case, yes. Yeah, they get a little fan club going. So we'll probably see that next week as well. But, you know, I'm happy to have people from other communities come see our awesome library, and then they'll come here forever and ditch their hometown. And we have our pumpkins and haystacks outside, which is my favorite thing to do. My husband calls it the annual cup of my car and hay. So we have a lot of fun doing that. Allison, our new young adult librarian, put out a jar of M&Ms this month, just to start as a conversation piece, so that she could start meeting people. So she did her first guess how many M&Ms are in the jar. We had 157 people submit. So it was very popular, and it was a great way for her to meet people, because they would come in. Yes. So our winner was Andrew Buckley. He has not come to claim his prize yet. We do believe he's a teenager, but we're not 100% sure. So... Yeah, so it's on social media. We contacted the contact that was on the slip.
She says there was a problem because his email was full, or something like that.
Oh, and it bounced back?
Yes.
Is it Jack Buckley's son, do you know?
I don't think so. No.
Yeah, ask around, because he has a whole thing of M&Ms waiting for him. A big giant jar. So, you know, she has something else now to engage folks as they come by the YA room, and she's going to keep that going. So as simple as it is, she's really been able to make relationships with people. Yeah, so she has snacks available after school for kids. She's starting to do, like, if you go and do, not a treasure hunt, scavenger... Yeah, scavenger hunting the library, and you, you know, you'll get a prize, you'll get a snack at the end, because food is the driver for teenagers. And they all come here after school to use our vending machine. So she's kind of trying to lure them from the community room into the teen room and enjoy some productive activities, rather than being not productive. So that's really exciting. And as we move on, I'll tell you a little bit more about some other things that she's doing and other things that are happening at the library. Our heiress report and financial report were both submitted. So our heiress report was great. All of our numbers were up, as they should be, because we were still pretty deep in COVID last year. So our numbers are up, we're happy about that. I'm not making any real predictions about any of our collection, because we're still in kind of this strange space. But it is, you know, it's interesting to see. One of the things that we did see is our e-materials. I was wondering if, once we opened back up, if that number would go down a little bit, that people were like, okay, good, I don't have to use this ebook platform anymore. But in fact, our ebooks actually went up. So people who are using them liked them, and they're going to continue to use our platform, which is great. Financial report was fairly straightforward. We are compliant, so we will be getting our state grant this year, and all the things that come with being certified, which is sharing materials with other libraries, our database subscriptions, our ILS, being part of a network. All of those things come with being certified. So that's fantastic. Just some ongoing maintenance things. We had a little trouble with our heat, that was fixed. We're scheduling a deep clean coming up very soon. I think we're ready. Through COVID, we really didn't have, I think it was a yearly thing before I came, and through COVID, we didn't have really enough people here that I felt that we needed a deep clean. But now we're definitely ready for a deep clean. So because we're open seven days a week, whatever day works for the cleaning company and for our facilities department, we will close that day to the public, and we'll have training for the staff. So it's actually a nice opportunity to get our CPR training done, and some of the other things that we'd like to brush up our skills in. And hopefully, we won't be closed for an entire day, but we'll see. Oh, another thing that we did was added a lot of shelving and display space in the young adult room. So I took some pictures, but please walk by and go check it out. Bless you. Allison's done just a fantastic job of lighting and brightening up that space. It is fun. It's like, it's like exciting to go there. She's got lights going, and she's got great Stranger Things theme on one side, and she's got some Halloween books on another side, so it's fun. Let's see. So the story walk this morning went to the ASP pumpkin patch down the street, so you can check it out there. That just happened this morning, I actually haven't even seen it yet. It was such a great idea. Yeah, it was awesome. I think Sharon thought of it, and yeah, it'll be great. So I think we'll leave it there, even past the pumpkin patch, and then hopefully move it from there back to the common, after we get all of our permissions to do so. Allison is doing Teen Foodie Fridays. So it's like, you can either make it at the library, or you can take it with you. So like on Friday, she's doing smores, and we're not actually melting marshmallows, but you can make your smore. Two Fridays from now, she has a mud pie pudding thing that you can make. So they can take it with them in their bag and just bring it home with them, or they can make it at the library and have a snack here. She's working on an Escape the Room. Yeah, and we're excited about this. She did a webinar on how to, through ALA, on how to create an Escape the Room. So that'll be fun for teens, but she's also hoping maybe some families will...
What does that raise, yeah?
So Escape the Room is generally... Generally, like companies or private companies were doing them, and they were in like usually a strip mall. But it's set up so that you get a set of, you go into a room, and you get a set of clues, and you have to answer the clues as you go through the room. And then finally, at the end, you'll get a key to get out. So it's kind of, it's a teamwork, it's working together, it's solving a problem, multiple problems. Great, great fun for families, it's great fun for everybody. It's like one of those... Did you? Oh, that's right, you told me you were going to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, it's two families, and then there was actually multiple rooms, you're in one room, then like secret, like the bookcase opens, and you go into another room. There was actually three or four little spaces.
Oh, that's cool.
Where was this?
It was called Box of Roo on Court Street.
Box of Roo?
Yeah, it's really fun.
There was one at the Kingston Mall for a while. I don't know if it's still there.
On Court Street in Boston?
Yeah, it's great. It could be for adults, too. It's totally for kids. It's actually kind of hard.
You can get stuck in the room for a while. I think they gave you a certain amount of time. Yeah, and then they boot you out. Yeah, but, yeah, it's fun. Yeah. So she's taking, she took a course on that, so that's good. We have the community preschool coming to do trick-or-treating here on Monday on Halloween. We're all thrilled, we all have our costumes. Actually, Justin, who's the new marketing person at Town Hall, arranged this, to have the kids kind of...
Marketing person?
Yeah, he's the new communications specialist. And so he started just a few months ago. He's an absolute delight. And he, his background is in reporting, and he's been doing a really great job of kind of connecting town business to maybe local, local things that are going on, and making sure that we are, you know, covering those things and involved. And any, you know, connections like this, where the preschool is looking for somewhere to go trick-or-treating that's safe, he's like, oh, we have plenty of town buildings, you know, they can go to all the town buildings. So he's, he's a huge asset to the town. He's fairly new, yeah, he's really great.
He's involved with the 143 TV also, like a little bit, obviously, because he's a reporter. And as soon as you talk to him, you can immediately tell that he's a television...
Oh, yeah, 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 he lives in town.
I lost Carolyn, I'm going to call her back, because she's driving. And it's easier for her to answer than it is to call. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thanks for calling back.
Yeah, no problem. So any updates that you see on, like, the unfortunate emergency that was over the weekend, all the updates? He was in the police van, and he was the one pushing out all the updates. So he's kind of an onsite for emergencies, but also does some community, help with community programs, and he's just awesome. We have kicking conversations with the zoning board coming up, and we just had kicking conversations with the natural resource officer that we share with Norwell, which is the animal control officer. And he came to talk about coyotes. That was a great showing. Ted called me after the program and let me know that when he went out to his car, there was a coyote outside underneath, hiding underneath the picnic table. And he just thought this was hilarious, because we were talking about coyotes, and he was like, he was probably just waiting, you know, listening to them. Yeah, yeah. So...
Oh, that is really... The picnic table outside.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, we're near rec, kind of near the playground.
But still, that is so populated there.
Yes. We get a lot of animals back in that area and near that playground.
So the kids dropping food, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. We had a fox at one point, too. It was making rounds in that area. So other than that, we are still working on the final draft of the strategic plan. Needs a little bit of work, and a little bit of tweaking, a little bit of kind of some connections. Closing up our SEIU union negotiations, those went very, very well, I thought, for everybody. And we're, the staff's getting together to do the website design committee, and we're looking forward to our first kickoff meeting. Right now, we're kind of just doing research regarding what websites that we like, maybe other libraries that we think are working really well, so that we can bring those to the designers and show them what we're working on, so... Or what we're interested in. So that's, that's my work.
Fantastic. Questions?
Walking in, I talked to Nicole, she's going to take some pictures.
Oh, okay.
For the idea that we discussed as a possible way of approaching the annual report.
Okay.
I mean, sorry, long-range plan.
Okay.
Is that on the agenda to talk about later, or no?
I didn't put it on the agenda, because I don't really feel like it's done enough.
Okay, sure.
If that's okay, but we can talk about pictures if you want.
Okay. I asked Megan, I said, if you divide the people who are going to read our long-range plan into groups, those people that are going to read it from start to finish, those people that are going to glance at it, what would be the rough percentage breakdown? She said, well, there'll be a couple people that will read it. If that's the case, given what the goals are saying, it would be really neat on the front page, just to say, long-range planning, 22, 26. And then have a series, maybe of nine pictures, showing how the library is being used today by individuals, by groups, for research, for fun, et cetera. And to really get the message out that this is not your conventional place. And so, and also for the staff that would be willing to have the picture taken, it would be great to have each of these nine, at least have in the group of pictures, a staff present.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. I also think that if somebody sees somebody that they know or is familiar on the front, they're going to be more apt to read about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we post the long-range plan on our website?
We do, yeah.
I should remember that.
That's okay. The old one's still up, because we're not quite done with this one, but yeah.
So one further idea, and so it doesn't all fall on Megan's shoulders. What if each of us, or as many of us that would like to do this, say, well, here's an interesting, exciting use of the library that fits with a long-range plan? And if we could get pictures of it, then it may be, as we set the goals, we might even put a little picture in and say, okay, this is, for example, here's a bunch of student ambassadors. And just a couple lines or two, so that people get the idea that they can come, just use our meeting space, use Gale for research, use our electronic expensive licenses, et cetera.
I think it's a great idea.
So does anybody have any ideas of use cases that are coming up in the next month or so, where we could get some pictures? And if so, would you be willing just to see if you get a picture of it?
I can do Girl Scouts.
Right.
Oh, that would be great.
Do you have meetings yet?
Yeah.
That's smart.
Meetings there, the big meeting room. And then the State Harbor one, I mean, since they're here tonight, and Nicole's already in.
Yeah, Nicole's already getting pictures already, so she's going to do that.
Great. I can always put my children in front of a video game or something and do that.
I can be hiding under the picture.
Yeah, or someone like, like where kids play basketball up there.
Oh, yeah, somebody checking out a basketball would be good.
That's a great one.
And what, what group, right, we should really ask our peers on the, on the discussion, what groups do you think could really take advantage of the library that aren't now taking advantage of it?
Like regular meeting groups?
Well...
Or just constituencies, general?
For constituencies.
Okay.
For example, we're getting our house cleaned today, and the two women are from Guatemala. And I don't think they're documented, but they speak a little bit of English. But there's so many things that they are wrestling with that we could help them with. I'm thinking of a list of all the republic's resources that are available for everything from housing to medical care and stuff like that. So that it might be interesting to have one picture of a couple of... And that also gets the inclusion concept, and that we're not all white pawns.
I would just imagine using that as an example, while it's a really good example, I don't think undocumented person is going to want their picture plastered anywhere.
Well, and I will also say, too, that those folks tend to not come to get the library card, because they're nervous that they're going to be...
Take the word undocumented out of it, and just people who are immigrants.
Yeah.
And don't have good language skills.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to get pictures.
Yeah.
There's a social worker hours here now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that would be, that seems to me like, that's a resource.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems like a natural fit.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people don't realize.
Yeah.
Megan, are people making appointments for that, or is it being, are they...
We're having a, we're having a little bit of a staff changeover there. Our social worker who worked for Elder Affairs, Stephanie Saunders, is now working for the Health Department, and so they're rehiring for Elder Affairs, and so that person will be here. But I will say, you know, it wasn't used a lot, but we definitely had, I'm going to say five or six people trickle in as we offered it. So I don't think it was unused.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Brooke. I mean, I think that is something that people just don't know enough about, and if they did, maybe, you know, that would help.
Yeah. Checking out something from the library things, oh, you said that basketball, I missed that, sorry.
But you could do something else, it doesn't have to be the basketball.
Yeah, well, basketball's pretty awesome. Tech help, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, going back to the library things, someone has posted some M&amp;B stuff, like, would it be cool if there is, or no, maybe it was a town, did you see this, that is a town that has a library of things? They have like a leaf blower and a steam cleaner, like things like that, which, I mean, I think are kind of useful.
They're very useful.
Asking your neighbor or something, you don't have one, right?
Yes. Like some towns, I think Brooklyn is one of them, they did like power tools. Yeah. You know? So, yeah, I mean, the options for library things endless, yeah. We just got one of those little cubes that you put like a character on top, and it reads a story or sings a song. So it's for a little, little person, and they can, they have this cube, it has speakers, and you can pick up, you know, the lion from Lion King, and flop it on the top, and it'll tell you a story about the lion from the Lion King.
I also loved and was so tempted at some point in the summer to borrow the inflatable movie screen and projector, to like, just have like outdoor movies or something would be fun one night. So I didn't know if people were even borrowing that, and did it work?
Oh, yeah, so that's a very popular item, and we've had to change the way it circulates, because people wanted it for specific days, which makes total sense. So somebody's birthday, or a football game, or something like that. And so if they were on hold, they didn't necessarily know when they were going to get it. So I was looking at a little bit of roulette for some folks. So we've changed the way, or we're working on changing the way of how you can check that out, and treat it a little bit more like a museum pass, rather than like a item.
To get it on a specific day?
Yeah.
I did want to say, while we're on this topic, I had one of those little gratifying moments on Facebook recently. It was on, I think it was on the Buy Nothing Cohasset page, and somebody was asking to borrow the large-scale lawn games, and somebody in the discussion said, check it out in the library.
Library, huh, but yeah. Yeah.
Good. Thoughts? Good on the strategic plan?
No, no. No, no, just, I just, if you think about what we're really trying to do, I was just struck by how unaware these two bright, capable women were of all the resources that could help them. And they're in Quincy, so they're going to go to the Quincy Library and see...
I bet the Quincy Library has some wonderful programs there.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they have a large immigrant population in Quincy, yeah. Good. All right, anything else? All right, then that is for one for the bills.
I'm out of practice. We had a big warrant this month. I'm not sure why. Well, Baker &amp; Taylor is finally able to ship the books again. We had this, they had a ransomware attack, and so they couldn't send bills, they couldn't take orders, you couldn't even fill out your report.
Right.
They were down for these two weeks at least.
Two or three.
Yeah, it was, it was very bad. So things back up and running, but we have this sort of ran out of books almost, and we have a glut, I think, coming in, Kristen had boxes and boxes. So it's kind of a large, we're more than $9,000 to pay to Baker &amp; Taylor this month. Other than that, what did we get? We started up the T-Mobile, the Wi-Fi hotspots, and now we have to start paying for them. It was in one year, OCLN was paying for the hotspot. So we reduced down to, I think, six?
Yes.
And so we had 10 originally, but six seems to be...
And you didn't actually use all 10? Well, I mean, the world wasn't that great.
No, well, no, probably wouldn't use all 10, although if a storm was coming, people would come and get them, because if you were, if your power goes out, you can use the hotspot, as long as it's charged up. But yeah, you can use it to, you know, to get you Wi-Fi. So there are a few people that kind of just use them as their personal Wi-Fi. And they'll take one out and then put a hold on it in a different card, a different person, a member of the family, and so that they continue to have some hotspot.
That takes some planning.
It takes some planning, and that's, I mean, we're paying for them, so I feel like, well, I might as well have them on work, be used. Other than that, New England, that's been really popular, so we're renewing that. And we did buy some furniture, so we've got a few bills for that. And we, oh, that movie license, we've switched from the much cheaper movie license that we had, that really didn't have a lot of options. And so we decided it was more important to at least have a movie license where we can show things that people want to see. Probably, it's more than twice as expensive, it's $550, which is, in the big picture, not incredible amount of money, per year. And right now, you can, normally you can't, but they're still on COVID protocols, you can use the license to show movies outside. And I know Megan D. had done that, and it was pretty popular. So I think Allison's thinking about maybe doing something, or maybe doing something with Sharon, and using the tent before it goes down. So anyway, that's what, why we decided to switch up. And that's everything I have. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. I just want to mention the furniture pieces are extra shelving in the teen room, so just so she could do some more. They're small, but she wanted to do some more displays, so they're very much like the little Amazon $30, $40 things. Yeah, yeah. Big purchases.
Megan, I just wanted to ask quickly, I think you had talked about getting a larger desk for the teen room, but when I was in there meeting the new teen librarian, she still had the little desk, is that okay? Or is that still something in the works?
Yeah, so she actually requested a small desk, because she didn't want to take up, because it's such a small room, she didn't want to take up a lot of space with herself. So, and it's also one of the desks that stands up as well, because that was something that was going to work best for her. So that's all set, and I don't think the small desk was, it wasn't very expensive at all, of course, because it was small, so, yeah.
And then just finally, so the display table that we talked about last time, is that one of the pieces that is on the warrant, and/or did it come in?
It's, it's here.
Brian would work some magic.
I saved the library $130 on that furniture, because I thought that they hadn't given us a discount, so I called them, and then they were like, oh, fine, we'll give you... Because the shipping was very expensive, it was over $300. And so the whole shelving unit itself was only $600, so I thought something wasn't right, and they ended up giving us a pretty good discount, so...
Oh, thank you.
We haven't put it together yet, maybe tomorrow, that might be the plan. But it is here, and it's on the warrant.
Okay, great, thank you.
She's offering a course at the library, wheeling and dealing with strong...
It's all about saving money. My father would be proud.
Are any questions or other discussion on the bills?
I'll move the bills.
All right.
A second.
Okay, we have to do a roll call for Bill, so Mary Lou Lawrence. Steve Brown.
Yes.
Brooke Jewell.
Yeah.
I don't know why I keep stumbling on Jewell, such a charming name. Sarah Peace.
Yes.
Elaine Breslow.
Aye.
Megan Brinsey.
Yes.
Alex Viteri.
Aye.
Alex, are you healthy? It sounded kind of throaty.
I think, I think that was just something that got caught in my throat, it did sound kind of weird, but thanks for noticing.
Carolyn votes aye, Catherine Harvey votes aye, so the bills, the warrant passes for... Thank you, Bronwyn, we'll pass it around and sign the bills. Okay, so then that brings it to me, my report. I really don't have, I would say, especially a chair report. I feel like really most of the things I touched this month were either CLT or Friends, so I'm going to just sort of defer, and then we can get into that under the other umbrella. So I'm gonna just sort of defer, and then we can get into that under the other umbrellas. So that will bring us to CLT is next, right? I just switched my screen off the agenda. Carolyn, do you want to say anything on CLT? No, she's still here. She's muted. I think she might be muted.
Maybe she got stopped by the.
Carolyn?
Up there, sorry. You go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, so just to say, so we have had a couple of meetings of the development, or like, I guess only one meeting of the Development Committee, and then we're gonna have another one tomorrow, this sort of in the early stages of talking about the the outdoor space and what our needs might be for fundraising in some kind of capital campaign, or what we might undertake to raise some funds for that. And sort of assessing how much that might be, and, you know, how we might go about that, given the funding sources that we anticipate we may have for the project, and then, you know, what the shortfall would be and how to, how to go about making that up. But the CLT, as, as the full board has not met since our last trustees meeting, so it was really just the Development Committee meeting, which consists of myself and Carolyn, and Jen, Anu Benet, and Megan, I guess, yeah, I think you were there. And Barwood. Right, of course. So, yeah, I mean, I think that that's, we're sort of in the assessment period. Do you think, would you agree, Carolyn?
Yes. So if anyone has any good idea here, we have, what we talked about needing to do is coming up with a plan for fundraising by targeting both people who might feel very generous toward the library and have the means to do so, and also making sure that, you know, people who don't have those same means feel like they're a part of it and can, you know, contribute and feel appreciated. So we were trying to come up with, you know, ways of recognizing large donors and that sort of thing. So if people have ideas, please, you know, shoot an email to Catherine or me or something and let us know. We, we are planning to meet at 10:30 tomorrow morning. So if you have ideas before then, that would be fabulous.
I should also say, and I should have said this prior to my draft report, but Carolyn and I met with the CPC. That's kind of our first round, and our project was warmly, warmly received, thank you.
That's a safe reach.
Normally rejected. Megan, go back to the library. So we've been invited back on the 24th to give more of a formal presentation, and we'll be asking them for 125, which is a third of our project, so fingers crossed, but we're on a good path.
Just to double back, is that one thing I should have said in the chairs report, we did also have another meeting with Chris McFarland, the Outdoor Space Committee, and, which was fantastic, and for the most part, he was giving us, you know, a new set of renderings, which we all loved. The only development there, I would say, is that we are contemplating perhaps moving the pergola so that it'd be right against the building rather than around this sort of, you know, rounded area that would overlook the amphitheater seating, which I think is gonna, I think we all sort of understood that that was gonna be not only a sturdier structure, but probably more functional in the long run. And so that was really sort of the only development there, unless, you know, I'm missing anything.
He's been fantastic and so generous with his time, and so receptive to any comments or, you know, questions, concerns. And he has accommodated, I want to say, pretty much everything, and not just from the trustees that were at those meetings, but also very interested in what the staff, asking Megan to go to the staff and ask for feedback from the staff as well as to how they envision utilizing the space. So I can't say enough about him. I'm just so grateful, and we're really lucky.
Yeah, I agree completely. He's, he's been incredible, and the drawings have been fantastic. And, yeah, he made the whole thing, I think, feel very accessible and achievable, and, you know, it's, I think it's been, it's been great working with him, for sure.
How much money we trying to raise?
It's not entirely clear yet, you know, that's why I would say we're sort of in the assessment phase. But I think that we think it's gonna be around 200, right?
Or a little more.
Maybe a little more. I mean, if we get what we are anticipating from CPC and.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were talking, Alex, you were asking what, share?
What would, how much we would be looking to raise.
Okay, the total.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, excluding other funding, you know, other, yes, other little pockets of cash that we have that we would be devoting, you know, so less anything that we are already accounting for.
So, so we're looking for donors.
It's gonna be 350 to 375.
Right.
And so, no, no, I guess the question is, so how many people, like, are we talking about, this is Cohasset, and, and, and this is people that don't run in my, in my circles, but if, how many, like, do we have people that are, that are dropping, you know, $25,000, $50,000 to the library for charitable reasons? Or are we talking about smaller donations, like 5,000 or 2,500, like the more approachable numbers? What are, what are we talking about here?
I think that kind of remains to be seen. I think it would be unlikely that we would get very many in the $25,000 to $50,000 range. I wouldn't say that it was necessarily unthinkable that somebody might do that, but I would say that it's unlikely that we would get more than, you know, maybe a couple. I mean, I, I, that's a guess. I mean, I should say that's a guess.
So if, I guess, for me, it was like, I was trying to understand, like, how, if we're trying to get, sorry, because I really, my brain doesn't work in any way, but, but like, small, like, compartmentalized things, like, are we trying, if, you know, if we get, you know, two dozen, $2,500 donations, you know, a series of smaller units, and then we get two that are in the large, you know, tenths of thousands, is that like, is that what the makeup of this looks like? I'm just trying to understand, like, understand what this, what are we trying to incentivize people to do, and what will it take to motivate them to get there? I can't, I just, I don't understand how, necessarily what we can do to motivate people unless I kind of understand what we're trying to, what does success look like? So I know the no total number, but how does that, how do we, how does that bill, how does that ladder up?
Well, I think that's sort of the discussion that we're having in, in the CLT committee meeting. And I, I have this idea that we're thinking maybe we'll have a small group sort of in the, maybe in the $10,000 range. And then, you know, and maybe we'll get an outlier that gives a large gift. And then I think we really, I mean, I feel strongly that we want to open it up to anyone who wants to participate at any level that they can or would like to, because we want to always, you know, have owner, everyone have the ability to participate and have ownership over this project, because it's a, it's a public project, and it's for, for the benefit of everyone. At the same time, anybody who wants to participate, I mean, we're not gonna sneeze at anybody, so. You know, that's the discussion. I think you've sort of summed up what the, what the conversation that we're, that we're having.
So we can conceivably see bricks with our names on them, if that's, if that's like.
That is something we've discussed. I think we've decided that, that something in the spirit of that idea is welcome, but perhaps not that exact idea, only because bricks require a lot of maintenance on the order of weeding and keeping tidy. And that ends up being, you know, a whole other expense and a draw on facilities and that could possibly be, you know, used in a, in a better way, and also might, you know, detract from the majesty of this project.
Understood. We also elected to afford concrete patio finish and stage finish. So, you know, it's less expensive, much less expensive than doing a brick walkway that's much easier to maintain, so.
Have you talked about naming rights, if somebody wanted to pick up the whole thing?
I mean, it came up. I would say we haven't had a robust discussion around it, but it has certainly come up. So, yeah, it has come up, but.
Nobody did any.
Yeah, I mean, it's. But it was part of our conversation, that that would be probably the most ideal way to get there quickly, because we do want to get this started. So there was a little conversation about it. But I also agree with Catherine that, you know, every dollar counts, so we don't want to leave people out. So.
But it is something that lends itself well to a little stone with somebody's name.
And I'm kind of thinking, thinking that, you know, any large donation or gift, you know, not always. Sometimes people are looking for a naming to be associated with that. And sometimes people really are just so generous, they, they, they're not looking for that. But I really love what you said, Catherine, and what you've just confirmed, Mary Lou, is that, you know, how you can help, you know, this is really a community project, and we really, nothing is too small and nothing is too big. And so everyone, even with a small donation, should be made to feel that they are the bricks that are allowing this process to move ahead, because without everyone kind of chipping in, it, you know, it wouldn't necessarily happen. Or we can do nicer things if everybody does do what, you know, what they can. And so sometimes I feel like these projects come off as elitist in terms of opportunities for naming things. And yet I feel that part of what we are, one of our first goals, or what we, at the back in square one, was to say accessibility and making everyone feel included and feeling ownership with this project. So I, I love that you're paying attention to, you know, the quote-unquote smaller donations and ways people can creatively feel like, wow, I've helped to make this happen.
I was gonna say, was it part of the discussion to have some kind of event, where, you know, $50 or $100 a person? The commerce, that too, too heavy, but.
I mean, it was not part of the conversation, but, I mean, certainly, it's, that's an idea that is something we should think about and explore. You know, some kind of a fundraising event, I think, would be, would be a lot of fun. I mean, if you do it outdoors, but of course, the, the days are waning. Yeah, I mean, of course, we're hoping to be underway by then, so. Time is short, but, you know, but no, it's, that's, I mean, that, we should definitely bring that into the discussion, because that does give people, again, the accessibility.
Yeah.
Steve, did you have something?
Well, I was just gonna reinforce what Elaine said, and wondering if there were a way to let children give a small amount, you know, a dollar, whatever their allowance is, so you could have maybe a support from children.
Participate somehow.
Yeah, like plant the bushes or something, you know, have like a family, you know, event where everybody can help plant our vegetation.
Yeah, that'd be nice. The former principal at Dear Hill used to do that. She used to have a day every, every fall. A bunch of kids would stay after school, and we'd all plant bulbs together. It was really nice.
That's great, yeah.
It's a nice way to invest the younger generation. 20 years, I think that's the shroud.
Or that could be a nice acknowledgement, too, if people are giving sort of at the $25 or $50 level to, you know, give a bulb to come back to an event to plant them. It's like an afterwards, you know, again, to like, give them some sense of ownership and pride in the project. So, all good ideas. I mean, I would say definitely keep thinking that way, and let us know as your ideas come rolling in. Everything, every idea is welcome.
Yeah, I love that idea of planting something.
Yeah, yeah, that could be great. Maybe she just muted.
I did just mute.
All right, so I think, unless Carolyn, you had anything else to add to CLT?
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so that brings us to the Friends. And where we stand with the Friends is that they had their meeting on Thursday morning and settled on a budget for their annual grant to the library. It was a pretty robust discussion, because as we are all very much aware, with costs increasing on pretty much everything in order to provide level services in the programming realm, it was, it was a lot more. So it was, it was a much bigger ask than the Friends are accustomed to, and it was inevitably going to represent a shortfall from the appeal, if we compare it by what the appeal brought in last year. So that was sort of a lengthy discussion, because in order to keep the level services, the shortfall was gonna be $7, $3,000.
Yes, they shorted it, the budget five, just about, so. And with a little bit of extra.
Right.
That would make sense.
Right, so I think the appeal came in, in the $28,000 range. And so it was, like you said, it was a robust discussion, because there is some money in the coffers, but where this is an annual grant, you know, there had to be a lot of consideration about what is sustainable and whether or not, and how the Friends would like to expand the scope of their fundraising to yield more to, to keep providing the programming services. So the number that they arrived on was $30,000 for the budget to come into the library for programming primarily. And there was also discussion about, although not lengthy, about the Friends participating in making a grant, a separate grant towards the outdoor space. Of course, it's sort of elusive at the moment with them already struggling with a shortfall. So that's all in discussion, I would say. And there are some great ideas around expanding the scope of the fundraising, the Friends fundraising. And I think that, and there are some, some new members on the board at the Friends, who I think have a lot, ton of energy for this and some really good ideas. And so I do think that there are some change to come in those areas. Of course, one of the things that has been incredibly beneficial is the book bins. And, I mean, while we're still keeping up the, the book sale in the community room, the book bins have dramatically increased what the Friends are bringing in for, I think it was $1,200 for the last quarter, whereas we were getting like, you know, 150 a month, so, you know, before, so, yeah, so it, it's, it's a big increase. I mean, you know, maybe getting a third book bin somewhere in town is, is another possibility, because that has been incredibly successful. But other, other things too, some other ideas too. And also, again, that same conversation that we keep having, you know, making sure that people understand what the Friends is, what their role is, and the fact that they are supplying all the programming at the library, and trying to expand the reach of the Friends with, around town, so that people understand that if you're using the programming at the library and you're enjoying it, or if there's programming that you would like to see that you're not seeing, a great way to make it happen is to contribute, and to make sure that you know who to contribute to. So, you know, of course, we are gonna potentially think about, like we have before, you know, cannibalizing on fundraising efforts and making sure that the Friends are getting the funding that they need to keep the programming services robust, while all, at the same time, you know, not generating any fatigue that might erode our opportunity to keep the fundraising going for the, for the outdoor space. So all of those things are, are afoot, and I think in a good place, and I think we'll be in the right direction. And so one thing that I wanted to mention about this is that I know that, well, I guess I want to ask the question. Historically, the trustees have voted on approving the grant coming in from the Friends, and And that mechanism, I I've always found a little bit puzzling. And so I, I want to put it to members of the board who have been on the board a little bit longer than some of us to maybe clear that up a little bit because I I honestly don't have a full understanding of why that has been the case historically. So I wondered, to me, it seems like a custom and I would say clearly not a requirement. And as far as, let's call it inter-entity relationships, I, the concept eludes me. So.
Catherine?
Yes.
So it's not that we accept the grant, it's what's supposed to happen is we're supposed to approve the programming choices and then vote to ask the Friends to please fund them. That, that's the mechanism that, that historically has taken place.
Yes, I would, I agree with that.
Okay.
Because that would mean that the trustees have, you know, power over the programming, what the program is. The Friends don't offer up the program.
I see, okay. So, I mean.
Friends still offer, but the trustees approve.
They don't, so actually, the programming comes from the librarians, really.
Yeah.
Well, that's okay. I think that's changed.
And that's not necessarily under the trustees' umbrella, it's daily operations.
And, and a lot has changed just in the last few years about how this process works because it also used to be that the director would come to the Friends and describe all that, well, coming to the Friends for each program and getting approval for each grant, you know, in like a couple hundred dollars at a time for each program. And so that process became dramatically streamlined. And then also the decision to basically budget the programming on a departmental basis. And so that whole process has evolved a lot just in the last two to three years. So, I mean, I think, you know, where does that leave us? As far as the trustees' involvement, I think that we've sort of given discretion to the department heads and to the librarians for choosing the programming. We have not been exercising any, I mean, for lack of a better word, control or decision-making power over the programming in recent years. And so query whether this still makes sense.
Well, ultimately, it all comes back to the trustees.
Yeah, approving the budget, too. Again, that's actually, it's just a budget approval.
Except that it's not the trustee's budget, it's the Friends' budget because the Friends is a private organization. But so in other words, the, 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 the Friends is, and, and, and this is also on my mind because the Friends have also just recently had hired lawyers and had a comprehensive rewriting of their bylaws, and everything is all cleaned up now. And I think part of this discussion that we've had with the strategic plan and part of the discussion that we have had about confusion among patrons about what, who is who and what we do, I think makes clear that the Friends is a private organization that engages in fundraising activities and then makes a grant to the library, which is a public institution, and that we, as the trustees, are elected officials, a representative body, who have stewardship over the library. But I don't think that the programming, I mean, that's a gift from a private organization that comes to the library. So I, I mean, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but I don't really understand. I mean, it, to me, it doesn't seem to be a requirement and it doesn't seem to have any specific legal utility to us as a representative body.
But if we have stewardship of the library, if the trustees have stewardship of the library, isn't it their responsibility to acknowledge, approve every single thing that happens?
I don't know about every single thing that happens. I mean, I think that we make.
Not every single, but, but all the different parts, CLT, the Friends, everything.
Well, I would make the same argument for CLT. They're also a private organization. They have, they, they're running the endowment, but the library is a public institution. So the CLT gives a gift to the library and I can.
And the trustees accept the gift.
Is could accept the gift and the trust is could, the role of the trust might be, how do we want that is being made? But I don't think that there's any need for us to sort of, you know, approve that gift that's being, I mean, they're, they're making the gift. They, they, their board decided how much they were gonna give the library, and we're receiving that gift. If we want to have discussion and make sure that it's being spent in the best interest of the library and our role as representatives of the patrons and the voters who elected us to be on the Board of Trustees, that's one thing. But, you know, I don't see how a stamp of approval, we don't really have any ownership over what the endowment does, just like we don't have any ownership over what the Friends does because they're two separate private, private organizations.
So Catherine, I think, I think what you just said was the, is, is exactly what is, is, is correct, right? It's the connective tissue. It's saying, we are accepting this gift and we making sure that it's you being utilized, the funds are gonna be you, being utilized properly against the strategic plan that we are involved in, right?
I, I, that's, that's my, my read of it, and that's why we just, I, I'm sorry, Alex, just one second, I just wanted to hear what Sarah had to say, having.
I, I was just saying that. No, but I mean, it has always been that even though, that the Friends is the fundraising element of the library because as we're not allowed to be fundraisers.
Right.
That's part of our thing.
Exactly.
The fundraising for us.
Right.
But they are in kind of a subsidiary position. I mean, they get to use the name of the Paul Pratt Library. And I think, I mean, I would just because, so they just don't want it to be that we acknowledge it by saying thank you for the gift, or they don't understand what the problem is.
No, I just don't think that there's any utility in our voting to approve, so, so in other words, so my question was, why are we voting to approve what the, what the Friends are granting to the, to the library? And then, and the answer was, well, we're not. We're voting to approve, what historically or customarily, we were voting to approve the programming budget and then, you know, in conjunction with approving the programming budget, we were then asking the Friends to supply the, the funds. But now we don't, we don't approve, we don't do the budget in that way anymore.
Oh, we, yeah, we never really, we never really did, we never, we never did. But I think that the problem, and I hesitate to speak for everyone, but I think the thing is that the trustees are the overseeing and that we really do need the final kind of level to be above the Friends because, I mean, they're using our name. I mean, so in a way, they are working for the library by using the name. I mean, this group of people on their own couldn't be raising money without saying, this money is for the Paul Pratt Library. Do you understand that?
Well, I do, but I mean, they, so they're the Friends of the Coasette Library. They don't, they don't use the name Paul Pratt.
Well, okay.
But, but I, I mean, I, I guess I don't see it that way because, I mean, so in their, their mission and their bylaws are written to ensure that they are fun, that they raise funds to the benefit of the library, that's true. But I don't understand why we, as trustees, have any influence over them unless they were to be going out and doing something that we thought reflected poorly on the library.
No, but I don't think, I don't think we do. I don't think we've ever said, no, we're not taking the money. But I do think that we want the idea that we would still have some form of control.
Of control and, and, and responsibility.
Because we're elected officials that are.
True, but we don't have, that's, I, I think what I'm saying is that I think that that control is an illusion because they're ultimately a private organization.
Catherine, maybe it would help, maybe it would help if you just, why don't you suggest what you would like to see happen that you think is different from what it is now? What specifically would you like to have? Just that the Friends would say, okay, we're gonna give thirty thousand dollars today this year?
Well, I, I don't think that I've thought about it in those terms so much. I just, I, I'm asking the question because I just, I don't understand this, this mechanism, and it, I have always found it puzzling.
What if it?
It's always, it's, and it's come up. It's come, it's come up in the past, and I remember Sheila Evans sitting there and saying, absolutely not.
I just think, yeah.
That this is the way it is. And, and that was the end of.
I have, I have a question. Elaine here, I have a question since I have not, I, my historical memory, it doesn't go as deep. But if the issue is having, we, we accept gifts from, you know, let's say somebody passes and they love the library and they give a gift, we don't question necessarily, and that person says, I, I want books about roses and only books about roses. And we don't, as trustees, question that gift. So if this donation from the, from the Friends is in fact a donation, a gift, we, we would be foolish not to accept it. But what we want not control over, but what we want accountability of is how that money is spent. And how we get accountability about how that money is spent and utilized and where it goes is by having our director report to us what the programming is, and we give deference to that director because that is an operational thing that, that, you know, we as trustees may, may say, oh, this might be a great idea for programming, or we've heard from some constituents and patrons that this is missing at our library. That's feedback. But we entrust the director and the staff to come up with innovative programming, of which I might say they have surpassed expectations in the last few years. And so accepting this gift doesn't mean that we are, you know, our hands are clean of any responsibility because we, that we will still be looking toward the director to report to us on how those funds are being proposed to be spent. So I understand that, that tradition or culturally how things may have been done, but I think maybe it depends on the relationship the trustees have had with the director, maybe it, you know, times are a little bit different. And so I think there's no question, the director and staffing have to be accountable to trustees and we have to have our finger on the pulse. We're not just saying, okay, just do whatever you want. But that's, you know, we're not saying that. We're saying we still want to and expect you to report to us as to how you're proposing to ask for grants and, and monies and how you're proposing to spend them. But we're not gonna, our, our job isn't to micromanage how those funds are being spent. And our, and again, our job isn't to say, we do not want to accept this gift or donation, even if it's for books that are only about roses, because why would we do that?
So do we feel then that we want to still have a vote and the vote is to direct, do we want it to be, I, so this is where I, I sort of go astray, but do we, do we want to have a vote about the disposition of the grant specifically, that we are directing the director to dedicate the grant from the Friends to programming? The only, the issue there is that it sometimes is slightly broader than that because there are sometimes like, in like the story walk or like there's sometimes some physical items that are not squarely within programming. So, you know, that's where it gets a little bit sticky. So I guess that's my question. Do we want to still be voting on this? And if we are still voting on it, how do we want to do it?
I, I just thought of another, another thing. One of the things that I know had always considered the trustees is when the Friends letter goes out, that they do want to have a look at it before it goes out. Does everyone agree with that? Correct? Because this is the way the library is presenting itself to the town. I mean, that's the one thing that goes out to everyone.
I, I don't think that is for the trustees, to be honest. I don't. I mean, I understand the impulse. I, I totally do.
Never gets changed or anything, but.
I know, and I, I understand the impulse. I really honestly do. And I think it's, it's completely understandable. And I think if that's, should be open to discussion about whether that's something that needs to still happen. I mean, I know historically that is what has happened.
No, I'm just saying it because, I mean, the one thing that the library really has is its, is its name, and we are the trustees of the library's name.
So as custodians of the image of the library.
Image of the library. I don't think we have ever gone, I mean, I can't remember ever changing the letter, but I think it is an important thing to see the letter before it goes out. I mean, we have a wonderful group that has done these wonderful things, but I think it's something we should still have a little bit of control over.
If there is a trustee liaison on the Friends, though, I don't know, my humble opinion is that I don't know if the liaison needs to look at it and then have it go to the board and have it approved from there as well. It just, it's.
It used to go to the whole board.
Yeah.
It used to, it doesn't anymore, but that's the way it was set up.
There have been issues with how the letter had been crafted in the past and that, and so it started that way. And then it got down to just the chair reading it and giving the okay. And, you know, I think it's gotten to where it's kind of nothing anymore.
What you're saying, though, I think, is that the Friends feel.
Well, I don't want to attribute to anyone other than, than me. I mean, I, I would say that this is my analysis, so I, I wouldn't attribute it to the Friends generally. I would say, having served on both boards for a, a lengthy period of time and also sort of my, you know, political scientist legal hat on, I, I, I have found the concept elusive. That's, so I'm, I'm asking the question.
Okay. But just to break it down, make it really simple.
Yeah.
If trustees write a letter and say, we've raised thirty thousand dollars.
The Friends.
The Friends. And we would like that to be used for our letter, said we were gonna use this to support programming. So that would be it. Here's, and we would just say thank you very much.
I mean, I, I suppose. I guess the question is, do we need to have a vote to direct that the grant is used for specific purposes? Do we, or do we want a, do we feel that we need a vote to direct that the grant should be used primarily for programming and the discretion of the director and library staff? Do we want, do we feel that we don't need to do a vote anymore? And then after we settle that question, we'll get to the question of do we want to still be seeing the appeal letter before it goes out?
Just for discussion's sake, the simplest thing seems to be to say, here's the letter, please help support the letter. We've got a wonderful staff. They will decide precisely how to use it. But it's just people that contribute are contributing for the health and well-being of the library and in, in the belief that the director and staff will, will do it wisely.
So I have, I have another question. So do, do the Friends have any opinion as to how the money is used anyway? I mean, do they ever say, we only want this used for programming or we only want to use this for, you know, museum passes or we, you know, I mean, they, it doesn't seem to me that they really, I mean, you know, how we direct the funding or how we phrase this if we have a vote and who say, we, we would like to see the majority of the funding go toward programming with the capability to be flexible should some, some, should some other future need arise, you know?
Well, so. So the, so the way that the, the monies work is they don't just, they don't hand us thirty thousand dollars that goes in the library coffers. It stays in the Friends coffers and we essentially request funding by presenting them an invoice, pretty much. And, and so they pay the invoice and send their treasure, pays the invoice and sends it off. So the model that we have broken away from, which was the previous. So the model that we have broken away from, which was the previous model, was not only did the staff ask for approval for a program from the board of trustees, but they would also have to go to the friends and have the same program approved so that the friends would fund it. Because they, you know, so since they're private 501(c)(3), they, at the end of the day, can decide what invoices get paid and what don't. We can't demand that they pay for certain things because they're separate from us. So we've broken away from that model, thank goodness, because it slowed operations and it wasn't, it wasn't good for the library or our community. So I think we're kind of now in limbo trying to figure out how to move forward in operating where, you know, the friends really are the stewards of their funds. And so they put out a letter that says it's for programming and for museum passes for the library. They really can't use it for anything else because they've fundraised under a certain pretense. So because it never goes into our account, I would say that we don't, we don't have final say of how it's used because it never goes into our accounts.
Well, I'm also kind of interested that the friends hired their own lawyer to change the 501(c)(3).
No, that's not, no, that's not accurate. No, they, no, they needed, the bylaws had to be rewritten. They were horrendously updated. I mean, they had been originally written in 1968 and I don't think they had been touched since the early 80s.
I just wondered.
Yeah, so, so we started the process probably three or four years ago, looking at them, trying to update them. And the fact is that the law had changed. We were in arrears paying fees to the state. And so that had to be sorted out. And so while the patient was on the table, they had professionally written bylaws.
Okay, no, no, I just wondered because, but I do kind of think if, that the friends are subsidiary to the trustees. I honestly believe that, as are, as is the trust. They both are. And that we all, even to the trust, they give us the money, but we vote to accept it. And I just think, I don't think it's a lot to ask to have, just look at the letter. It has our name on it. It is the one fundraising thing that goes out from everyone. And I, to vote that we accept the money, we don't, we don't quibble on what it's spent on.
Otherwise you have these free-floating organizations in the library.
I mean, but they are.
They should be. But I mean, everything falls under the trustees.
But we can't fundraise, so.
That we're not, that's why the trustees, that's why the trustees step up the friends.
But you have to operate under the, under a direction, right? Under a plan, there's a brand, right? It's like, if this were, if this were a company, you'd be saying, I've got to, this is, these are my objectives for the year that the board of trustees or the board of directors would be doing. And you, and regardless of where the money comes from, you still have to kind of meet those goals. And so I agree that, although I would never use the terminology that's a subsidiary of the, of the, of the library. I do think that it is, it is, it's a guidance of the board of direct, of the board of trustees that is driving the strategic plan, which we are just, we're working on right now. And if, if for some reason those dollars are being earmarked for something that don't ladder up to the strategic plan, they shouldn't be approved. I mean, like, that's how, I mean, I don't know how, am I not getting it? Because I feel like I agree that we shouldn't be approving the dollars. The dollars are great, thanks, you know, thank you for the dollars. But at the end of the day, we have to be approving how the dollars are used. And it's our brand, right? I mean, it's our, what we're trying to do is we're trying to reposition, moving away from it being about books. It's about community. I mean, sorry if I sound like I'm getting frustrated, but I feel like the last three months, we've been talking about what this, what we want the library to be. And all of a sudden we think it's okay for some, for a, for another organization to put out a letter and tell us, tell the community what we're about. So no, I don't think.
So that, so the letter is their annual appeal, appeal letter. And it is, that's, that is their whole fundraising budget for the year, basically. So they send out the letter saying, please give to the friends in the library. You know, here's a sample of some of the programs that we've run this year and we pay for all the programming, just so you know, so please give. That's basically the gist of the letter, although it's lengthy. So I wouldn't say, you know, I would say that they only sort of, you know, rep to their own activities, which is providing grants to the library for the programming. So, so I think that brings us back to the question. So do we want to be then, do we want to have some kind of a vote that acknowledges that the grant is earmarked for programming? Again, it doesn't come in as a single grant. Now, from the way Megan has described it, it's really coming in piecemeal by, it's more of an in-kind really. Because if you're submitting the invoice and they're paying the vendors directly, it's really more of an in-kind, it doesn't even come to the library.
Why wouldn't the trustees just acknowledge all of that as it comes in? Just as we acknowledge CLT. So the trustees need to know what everybody is doing.
Yeah.
And whatever goes out to the, to the public. I mean, the friends have never done this and CLT has never done this. But there's nothing, right now, if you've got these free-floating organizations, there's nothing to stop them from sending all kinds of letters out. They would never do it.
Right, right.
Well, and we have, we do have representatives on both. I'm a little stunned. So because the CLT is a little bit different in the sense that they give us the money and it goes into our.
Right, and the friends, it works differently.
So it works differently. I don't know if that means we treat them, our approvals differently, but.
I mean, the thing is too, and the more we discuss it, the more it's going to also make it more complex on the, on the CLT side. Because the CLT grant goes in more different places than the friends.
Well, definitely, no.
I mean, I, I mean, most of it goes to materials, the way it is now, but.
It accrues to the CLT gift account and the gift account than in the warrant every, you know, every month.
Right, we know.
If materials are purchased. So, so we are approving with our warrants, anything that's spent out of the gift account from the CLT.
Right, okay, okay, good point. All right, so it sounds.
I think we do the same thing, but we get a report on deposits to the gift account. And I think the friends monies, wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, go to a gift account. And then the purchase of the museum pass or the payment of the program or whatever comes out of that gift account and shows up on our warrant.
So they, I give them a total at the end of the year, the calendar year, of what we spent on museum passes. And Barbara gives me a check for that amount. And so we pay out of the gift account all year because there's a surplus balance in this gift account. Pay the museum passes out of that account and then it's reimbursed at the end of the year. So it is on the warrant. In fact, there was one of those zoo New England that came out of the gift account. And I'll put that on the list at the end of the year and get a reimbursement.
So those two items sound like they're treated a little bit differently than what Megan was describing earlier, which is we have Mama Steph coming, we have to pay her, we go to the friends, we submit the invoice and then the friends pay the invoice.
Yes, all the programming that we have, any performers. Well, now we do, Mama Steph will do a monthly bill. We used to pay every week when she came. Now we do it monthly and I give it to Barbara. Barbara writes a check and sends it to Mama Steph. If it's someone that's coming here, she'll write me a check and I keep it in my safe. And then the day of the program, it's handed to the person. So we don't do any, there's no, nothing on the warrant particularly or anything. We don't really have any control of that money other than holding the check.
Is it accurate then to say that anything that's not being paid directly by the friends is flowing through the gift account?
Anything that's not paid directly.
So like the museum passes?
Yeah, they pay for, they pay for also Oriental Trading, all the crafts.
Okay.
So I order the crafts and then get the invoice and Barbara pays it direct, pays that bill. And Amazon, some of these are from Amazon. I think museum passes are the only thing that we really like pay for out of our accounts. And then they reimburse us. I think that's the only.
But we're capturing those items in the warrant.
Yes, so sort of museum passes.
Right, but my point is like, that other than the situation in which the friends pays an invoice or pays a vendor directly, anything else is coming through the warrant that we're seeing and approving every month anyway.
Yeah.
So we, you know, then that does give us, you know, some measure of, of control or, you know, at that, at that level of seeing all those expenses and, you know, where it came from, as far as the accounting goes.
And sometimes the, we've asked for say $30,000, sometimes we don't spend that amount. Things get canceled, you know, for whatever reason. And the friends just keep that, those funds. It's different than the endowment. They say, we're going to give you this much money. It goes into our software account, account. And then if you don't spend it in that whole year, it carries over the next year. You still have it. With the friends, it's a little bit different. It stays with the friends.
Right.
Also, if you look at the CLT, the papers that were written under the setup, they are, they are responsible ultimately always to the trustees. And that, that's very clear in there. They don't call them bylaws. Carolyn, what do they call that?
I couldn't really hear what you were saying. Sorry, Megan, just can you repeat it, please?
The papers that, the founding papers for the CLT that were written back when CLT was founded in the early 90s.
Bylaws, they're bylaws?
Early 2000.
Early 2000, yeah, 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 yeah. And they state very clearly that CLT is set up always and that they would always answer to the trustees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's hard to make, also to make a vote for this when we don't really have the papers in front of us. It's kind of hearsay. But I'm sure that the actual papers that set up the friends has something in there about, about it.
I don't think it does about the trustees.
Yeah.
About its relationship with the trustees. I, I mean.
You know, I just hate to make a vote.
No, no, and we don't have to, and we don't have to. We don't have to at all. I mean, the, so I think that the issue is whether or not we feel that we need to vote tonight on this budget number that the friends have arrived on for their, their basic budget for the year, what they are intending to grant to the library. I mean, so that's really what the question is. And so I think that we've established through this discussion that the, that generally speaking, for, in most cases for the programming, that the friends are paying directly to the vendor. And we've established that in cases where that, that is not happening, we are getting a full accounting of that and approving those expenses through the warrant every month. And so I think those are salient facts. And so we don't, I don't think that we have to decide this tonight. I think that, you know, I think we've touched on most of the issues and I think that everybody should think about what their view of it is. And, you know, we can come back next month and think about, you know, maybe with some concrete ideas, if someone can put forward a motion for how we want to handle that going forward. I don't, I don't see what personally, and typically I'm handling this issue very, very much differently than I typically do because I generally view myself more as a moderator and I like to hear what everybody has to say. And then, and I am opining a little bit more on this one than I typically do again because I've served on both boards. I don't see the utility personally in voting for the friends to, on a piecemeal basis, pay vendors for programs that are happening at the library. I understand the impulse to have some measure of control over our branding and I understand our impulse to make sure that we're all swimming in the same direction. And so if, I think that we should figure out how we want to accomplish that. But I'm not sure that putting a stamp of approval on the friends budget is the right way to do it. That's, that's my position on it. And I think that we should settle it with a motion and maybe not ready to do that tonight.
So would the motion be today that we accept the friends budget of $30,000? Would that, what the vote would be? Because I mean, I think as we've already decided tonight, it's a fairly fluid number that does changes over the course of the year.
Right.
It doesn't, you know.
Doesn't mean that much.
It doesn't really mean much, really.
Back to the beginning.
That, you know, going back to the original way things were handled, might accomplish what we're looking for. And Jackie used to present a slate with, here are the programs. And there were sometimes programs that came up that weren't on the slate. But Sharon knew most of the things that she wanted to do for her summer programming and everything. And she would say, okay, here it is, it's $20,000. And the trustees would say, wow, that looks great. Yes, ask the friends. And then the friends would decide whether they have the $20,000 to allocate to it. And so it isn't so much approving every little thing that goes to, you know, Lee and friends or Mama Steph. It's, you know, is that the right, you know, the friends have a finite amount of resources. And is that what the trustees think is the best use of those resources? To spend X thousands of dollars on programming? And usually if the staff thinks that that's what the right thing to do is, then so do the trustees. But, you know, that, that is basically what the mechanism was and could still function that way. If we just, you know, had Megan say, okay, this is what I want to ask the friends for. And, you know, a hundred times out of a hundred, we're going to say, that looks great. But it at least gives us a chance to look at it. And then, you know, then the friends approve it. And if it's $30,000, you know, then we could have had that discussion about, holy cow, that's $7,000 more than we usually ask the friends for, you know?
Hundred percent agree.
So then, so basically the sort of departmental budgetary workup would come through here before going to the friends. That's, that would be the change.
Well, that would be the reinstatement.
Right, that's how, that's how it's kind of been. Totally different mechanism. I mean, before it was, anyway, sorry, Elaine, go ahead. I was going to say, that's kind of how it was because the director would come forward and say, these are the kinds of things we would like to look at for programming. These are our new ideas. These are the ones that are, you know, being brought forward from prior years that have been successful. And the trustees would always say, you know, ask questions and say, that's wonderful. And then it would go to the, you know, to the friends to say, this is about the amount of money that we need to keep level, you know, balanced budget and, and funding of level services. And then the friends, obviously, it's their budget, it's their money. And they would say, yes, we can accommodate that. This is as much as we can. So it's kind of, it's not changing a lot. It's just saying maybe the first step would be, you know, to hear as trustees what the programming ideas were. Not that we had, we would never question them, but we would just hear them to be able to say, we think that's a reasonable funding opportunity.
Why wouldn't we question them?
The difference though, Elaine, is that it used to be that the whole slated program for the year came before the trustees and the friends, before the budget was approved. And now what we're doing is we're approving departmental budgets and we're allowing those decisions to be made in the discretion of the staff. And I, what I don't want is to have a situation where we are retreating away back to, you have to plan all of your programming, you know, in advance for the whole year and then bring the entire slate of, of programs to us before we approve and to the trustees to approve what the programming is.
So how do you, so how do you plan?
I didn't understand that, but it could still be presented to us that we want to give young adults $2,000 and we want to give adult programming X and children's programming Y and how that compares to last year. I mean, we can still have that discussion.
Also, when, when you put out your budget of $30,000, I mean, basically when you send the letter out, you don't really have a goal in mind. You want, your goal is, we want to get as much as possible.
Right.
But how do you, how do you, so what's, how's the plan established then? So that's what's unclear to me. Like, how do we know that, how much we want to spend? What, what are we laddering up to? So this $30,000 comes in and gets, gets, gets taken out piecemeal on a monthly basis, paying off to Mama Steph and other things that may or may not. and other things that may or may not matter because they're small and we don't see them? Like, I don't understand, like, what's the bigger plan?
No, okay, all right. So let's back up a little bit. So let's back up a little bit, okay. So the way the model works now, the, the departmental heads submit, each one submits a budget to Megan. Megan puts that together. They have discussion. They get it to, you know, what seems reasonable and providing the best and most robust programs that they can. But each department head has some discretion within his or her budget. So then the, the, the departmental budgets for programming are brought to the Friends as a whole. But then also, you know, with a broken out, itemized, you know, per department list. And the Friends have an idea, you know, of, of what the each department head would like to present. And then also based on what they have historically presented over the last couple of years. And they have been, you know, beginning the sourcing for new programs and whatever. So it's not totally piecemeal, that, that, what, I think where we got lost on that is that generally the, the vendors are paid directly by the Friends from the Friends treasurer. And changes are sometimes, some, sometimes happen. Like Ron said, sometimes something gets canceled or something gets changed or they replace one program and it gets canceled with something else that might cost less. So there are changes, but those departmental budgets are basically approved. The Friends say, okay, we're okay with Gail getting, you know, two thousand dollars to do Craft or Dark or whatever it is for the year. But then Gail does have that pool of money and she knows that that's what she has for the year and then she can plan around that. And if that means making some changes to, you know, a, a program she's had historically to add to something else and she has the discretion and the mobility to do that and the flexibility to do that. And I, I don't want to see any change in that because I feel that that would also maybe seem like a rebuke to the staff, which is definitely not what we want. Because I think that they, we have given them some ownership over their departmental decisions and they've been incredibly successful. And I definitely would not want to, like I said, retreat from that in any way.
Well, I think that just hearing different people talk about what's happened is that in the last few years, we have a new director and we've had COVID. So different situations that had occurred for a long time, such as the programs being presented to the trustees first, have changed. Because we didn't even have any programs for a couple of years and they, with the new director. So it's a change of the way things are done. Not meant as a rebuke. And I've been on the Friends for a long, excuse me, I've been on the trustees for a long time. And, and we really never said no to a program. I mean, never did. So it wasn't a question of that. But I do think it is overall that should be understood that the trustees do have some say over the Friends. And they, and I don't know, the Friends budget is kind of a whole new thing. We never voted on their budget before. They didn't have a budget.
Well, because it was always, it was per program.
Well, it was, you know, here's the slated programs and then it would be the whole thing and then you program it and I would be. It's just, it's just a different, actually, it's the same thing. It's just a different way.
Well, except that we've shifted the discretion to the staff. That's the big change that has happened. And that's, that's, I don't, I want to keep that. I mean, personally, I would like to see that intact because again, they've done incredibly well.
But that doesn't affect the way things have always been done.
I, I mean, it, it does in my, in my view, but we're, we're nine people. So that's why we have the discussion. And so I'm not sure where that leaves us.
I like your suggestion of lets us mull on it.
Yeah, and then I would love to hear a couple of suggestions for motions at the next meeting and then we can sort of see where we are.
Yeah, I wasn't even quite sure what we were actually voting on.
Well, I wasn't either. That's why I started this conversation. I never understood it. And that's, that's.
Well, I don't think we ever sat down and voted on a Friends budget. We, we never voted on the budget. We never voted on the number.
Well, I think we did, yeah. I think we did.
Yeah, that's kind of what prompted this conversation because we voted on it last year. And I think it took both of us by surprise a little bit. We were like, well, how does that, how does that all integrate? What is everybody's role here that, you know, and so it was just a big question of like, kind of, what's everybody's say?
I don't remember having done that before.
So, all right, so that's, so that's where we'll leave it. If everybody would, you know, think about that. And if you have some, you know, an idea of, of, you know, from a, a language point of view, how to get our arms around this and figure out how to establish exactly how, what it is that we're approving, whether we need to be approving it and, and how we want to address that going forward. I would appreciate that. So that was a more lengthy Friends report than we typically have.
No, but it's good that you, you bring it up because I'm not worried about it.
Well, and again, like, I, I, and I keep saying this, but I feel like in every meeting that I am in, whether it's CLT or it's here or it's the Friends or any subcommittee, that the theme that we keep coming back to is trying to reduce the confusion around what the roles are, what the entities are, how everybody works together and making sure that we're collaborating. But also understanding that there are three very distinct entities here. And that there's a lot of confusion among the patrons. Frankly, there, there's a lot of confusion even within those entities. And so I, I think it behooves us to clear it up.
Is there a meeting at any time during the year where the three entities get together?
No, but I was thinking that very thought earlier tonight as I was walking through this analysis in my head before the meeting. And I, I think that that's really something that we have to start doing. Eddie, new business or other thoughts anybody would like to contribute? No, I'm going to take that deafening silence as no and encouragement to bring them to the meeting. So may I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?